...tacted on what they're doing. Um, let's see, let's see, let's see. I have a few other things that I want to make part of my directives. One would be mandatory training for commissioners who sit as a body whenever there's items brought to them that have ultimately been heard before the FPPC, FCC, and those alike. So mandatory requirements for commissioners to understand and be educated on the things they can and cannot say. Very important. I want to make sure that we're not being held liable for something that is being said up here that ultimately doesn't speak for me or the city. So if I could get that. And again, this is for commissioners that sit on planning committees and others that ultimately have to make decisions on applications for public agencies. I also would like to consider a resolution for holding council meetings at the Memorial Center. I would like for a resolution to be prepared so that we could ultimately look at having public city council meetings. I know that they've been held before in the past at the Memorial Center, but I want to make it more public where there could be more participation. It could be maybe once a year, maybe two, twice a year, but something to consider, and I'd like to ultimately get a report back on that, on how that went previously. I also want to thank our staff that is right now currently working hard in getting the deadline to Sacramento where public agencies redevelopment monies are concerned. I know that they're trying their hardest to meet the deadline, and I appreciate everyone's hard work and, excuse me, dedication in making that happen. Um, let's see here. Also with regards to CDBG monies, community development block grant monies, I appreciate the Planning Department, Greg, our community agency, to provide those letters out to the community to let them know the application process has opened. I also want to see it being duplicated on our website. I want it also, I'll probably provide some additional names because I know there's a lot of great agencies and those that have inquired on when that happens. Um, I think ultimately that's it. And you know, we can't, we can't do this alone. When we talk about, you know, redevelopment monies being taken from us from the state, we need everyone's help here. We need our constituents, we need our residents to write a letter to their elected officials, their senator, their assembly member, basically voicing your concern and telling them no. And what you do is you call your legislator, you tell them how you ultimately, you know, oppose the cuts, and they pretty much log it as to how many folks are calling their office. So it's very important that we get the community to help out on this. We can't do it alone. We can only do so much as a city, but we need to show great efforts on everyone's part. And Chief, thank you so much for your critical incident training to your officers, your SWAT team, and what you do in our community. Thank you so much. And that should do it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Member Warris?
Darlene?
Yeah.
Okay, baby. Okay, here we go. Well, first and foremost, I want to say congratulations to our mayor for a very fun-filled state of the city. You did a, did a good job, and now we're going to have Fiat, and you mentioned that we're going to get another automotive.
We're trying right now.
Okay, okay. Well, I can't wait. I'm still going to drive Toyota. Okay.
As long as it stops.
As long as it stops, and I don't run that red light at Hendry. Let's see. I saw, you know, I really enjoy when we have a lot of things at the Memorial Center because, you know, that's a big piece of acreage, and there were so many things on February 12th. And I know that one of the things that, actually, my wife made my favorite dinner because I got to get rid of a whole bunch of items that were in the garage, old paint, thinner. So I know I saw a lot of people, the line was really long for the hazardous waste, so I want to thank everybody for getting rid of all that stuff out of their garage. Congratulations to Councilwoman English and Animal Control Officer Evelyn Diaz for luck of love. Actually, I went there hoping I could get some hair, but I told I didn't, I didn't qualify. That, that's fine. I can, I can live with that. And also in the Memorial Center, we're having the South Bay Environmental Services Center, they were putting on a seminar on saving energy with energy upgrades. And I actually, I went there because I changed out my water heater to a tankless water heater, and I was hoping to get information on a rebate. Well, I did it last year, so I didn't do it this year, so I didn't qualify. So that was kind of a bummer, but there were a lot of people getting a lot of good information. I hope they took it to heart, and they're going to implement a lot of those, those items. The what?
The government.
Oh, no, blame, I tried and I was turned down because I, I turned it in kind of a year later, but that's what happens. Let's see. It was mentioned that Alex had a Survivor lunch over at the Memorial Center, and we saw a lot of people there, including the Niibels, they were there, and it was nice to talk to them about what they've gone through. So I certainly hope that we support Alex and his Really for Life, that's coming up in April. And he's also looking for money. He's got a much bigger goal than last year, so we're committed to helping him out to do that. I want to thank the chief for this program, Coffee with a Cup, I mean Coffee with a Cop. It was, I think it was a good success. There was a lot of people there. I was very surprised to see how many people were coming in and out, and it wasn't just the people that were in a hurry to drop their kid off at school and get to work. There was a lot of community people that came out, and one of the things that we were hearing a lot of was these, these parents who want these streets closed. I know that we're putting that in the hands of our administration, and hopefully we can help these people out to, to take care of that. But great job at this new program. I think it worked out great. Let's see, it was mentioned, the Hawthorne Imperial Alliance had a speech contest, three people there, three students, they did an outstanding job. I know I wouldn't want to be up there talking about enforcing our borders, but I do want to mention that there was one, actually, the young lady that won, she was reading from a card, and Larry couldn't even read this stuff with his glasses. It was so small, I don't know how she could read that. It was tiny, but she did a great job. I'm really looking forward to her to competing on, on March 1st, and we wish her the very best. There was a couple of Black History Month activities. One was at the Senior Center, and I wanted to thank Diane Brown, who did a great job in providing a program for the seniors over there. But one thing in particular was an employee that works for Mark. And this is Brenda Williams. I could not believe the way she sings, and I would love for her to come to a city council meeting and, and sing maybe something.
God bless America.
God bless America. Maybe if you can arrange that for the next meeting? I mean, if you hear her voice, we have a lot of talent in this city, and I think everyone would really enjoy that. So if you could arrange that, that would be great. Just don't, yeah, just don't miss it like Christina Aguilar. Yeah, we don't, we don't want that to happen. Yeah. Let's see, the Teen Center also had an event, and here again, the youth there, not only were they singing, playing instruments, reading poetry, but we even had a special appearance by You Got It Michael Jackson. And these kids are just tremendous. So congratulations to Jen, I think you mentioned that, to Mrs. Lambert, and he is doing a real good job with that Teen Center. This past weekend, if you remember, we distributed the high-efficient toilets. We had an allocation of 400. We distributed 382, and this past weekend, we collected 356. So that means we're going to be saving a lot, a lot of water. So I want to thank all the Hawthorne employees who participated in that to try to save energy there. Let's see. Mr. Mitch, I want to thank you for your quick response on this issue on the fire truck that was supposed to be headed to Gardena. That decision hasn't been made yet, but we know that part of the reason was that we can't house such a long truck here. That's, that's not true? We can?
I'm going to talk about that.
Okay, okay. Well, you, I'll let you deal with that. That was my understanding in reading the memo from, from Chief Ramirez. Yeah, okay, very good. Katrina, you still here? Congratulations.
Thank you.
For looking forward to you making a lot of contribution on the, on the commission. Mr. Mitch, I had asked you about a, a policy manual. Do we have such a document in the city? A policy manual, just a general policy manual for, for the city?
I'm not familiar with any, with any of them, but I'll verify it, I'll check in and see if we can find.
Okay, if you could please do that. Well, see, I had heard that there was one, and I've never seen it.
I've never seen it.
Yeah, so if you can please check into it.
I will do that.
Yeah, I know that we have some manuals that are still work in process. Maybe that's the one, 20 years later. I don't know. I want to extend a congratulations to the South Bay swim team. They took first place in the 2011 Winter Championship Meet, and not only did they win their division, but they also won the entire meet. So I want to thank all the young people, as well as Coach Kathy Gore Davis. And in addition to that, we had four individuals that qualified for the Junior Olympic Squad. So we're doing a lot of good stuff over there at the, at the municipal pool. Great job. Actually, we had another meeting of the Hawthorne Historical Society, and I think we decided that we're going to be charging $25 a year. Is that right? So we're now accepting memberships for anyone who'd like to be part of our Hawthorne Historical Society, $25 per year. And we're trying to raise money right now to take care of all of the expenses that will be incurring when we renovate the storefront there on Hawthorne Boulevard. The what?
Water.
No, we don't want to take that rumor. Let's see, the other thing is, I had asked at the last council meeting about a company called More Prepared and getting us a earthquake preparedness kit. I want to thank staff for working with the owner of More Prepared. And for residents who are interested in getting a kit, the discount code when they go to log out on the computer is HAW 2011. That's HAW 2011. And, and the other part is that when you put, in terms of a postage, just put that you will pick up at the warehouse, and they're right over here on 147th. And they've arranged for us to get a, a city discount, so I hope people take advantage of that, and, because we don't want to happen what happened, what in New Zealand?
How do you do that?
Well, you can, you can either contact them directly, and their number is 888-733-7245. Yeah, and, and by the way, you know, this, this came from the meeting that Mr. Richards had at Ramona. He, remember, he had that flyer there? And so I'm glad we finally got around to getting this code, so the residents will get a discount. That's pretty good. Yeah, yeah, maybe we, can we put it on the, well, can we do that? Can we do that, Mr. Attorney? Okay, fantastic. Let's see, Mr. Mitch, tonight will mark the third time that I've been asking for an overtime report. I don't know what it's going to take to get this report. You know, I, we haven't got it, we, I've asked for it by department like we used to get, so I don't know what's, what's the holdup?
Well, let's ask the finance, the finance for that.
Would you like to come up to the microphone, sir?
Maybe he doesn't know. He's still new. I don't want to put him on the spot.
I, I want to ask him, he's in charge of our finances.
It was a, it was a graph?
I, I prepared an overtime report and sent it to the city manager, who I'm sure is reviewing it before he gives it to you, and we will have another one. We have a second one that's prepared and ready to be given to you also.
This is by department, and it shows a graph, it shows what we spent last year at the same period versus what we spent this year? Did you see the one we had before?
No, I have not.
Can someone give them a copy of that? Because that's what I'm looking for, as a comparison.
That's fine.
Thank you, sir. So I guess we'll get it in our next council packet. Right, Jim?
We can, if we, if I can get it before that, it'll go in the council mail out this Thursday.
I mean, I want a complete report. I don't want just one overall. It's, I wanted to see it by department.
Okay.
I mean, please familiarize yourself with the report we used to get. That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, then I won't say this weekend, I'll say.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, and, and Mark, do you know when we're going to get the report that I requested? Or did you, did you give that to, to Jim? This is the report on the amount of fees that we generate from the Memorial Center? You, oh, you already sent it?
I'll reset.
Okay, okay, thank you. Let's see, next thing is, I would like a list of all the positions that we have in the city. Okay, I want to know what we have in the city in terms of positions. I don't want to know what they're making. I just know what positions do we have in either the MOU or some other document that says we have these positions available? Okay? I want to thank Mr. McLean for assisting me and driving around the city and, you know, taking a look at, you know, these redevelopment areas. I think that's the sort of input that both you and Jim are looking for, and I hope everyone else. I know, I know Larry, you've already done it, and Alex has already done that, but, you know, it, it helps to have that one-on-one with him because he'll show you a bunch of areas, and everyone's going to have a bunch of ideas, and, and perhaps that's what you can use as your basis to put that report back to us. Let's see, Mr. City Attorney, can we get an update on legal confidential on all the court cases that we have right now? I know that we have several with police, we have a bunch of things. I just know what the potential liability is down the road. And I think you've done this before. Do you remember that? You did like a quick synopsis on each one of them? That's what I'm looking for. Earlier, you heard the mayor talk about, you know, that we, we have to take care of our people, and, and it seems like everyone is dumping on Hawthorne, and we just sit there and take it, and, and enough's enough. Well, here we go again. The city of El Segundo now, I've got confirmation.
Is it true?
Yep, that they have signed a letter of intent. Walmart has signed a letter of intent to build a Walmart where the Xerox is on aviation. Do you imagine what that's going to do in terms of the traffic?
You didn't believe me, did you?
Here it is. Here's a letter from their city manager. We got to fight this.
Oh, tremendously.
Yeah, you know, wrestle, whatever you can do. This cannot happen. I mean, yeah, I mean, do you imagine once people find out that there's a, an easy access down 135th? That's going to be like Hawthorne Boulevard. And, and it just so happens that that's the same property that the Wiseburn School District is looking for, for the Wiseburn High School. So I think first things first, let's, let's jump on the bandwagon. If we have to pass a resolution, something, but we got to send a strong message, you know, to them saying enough's enough, you know? And, and the thing is, is they won't even be affected because their residential is on the other side of Sepulveda. It's, Hawthorne's going to be affected.
Well, they've got some areas open at their new El Segundo Plaza, a couple stores over there.
Yeah, they can take it over there. I don't, I don't care. I don't care, but.
But see, Danny, you, you thought I was crazy when I told you.
No, no. There was all this haircutting going on, and I know maybe your hair fell off.
I don't know, man, but I, I knew it was coming.
Okay, let's see. The other thing is, this is tax season, and Stephen Bradford is having some folks from the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program doing free income tax, and it was, it was happening tonight, but tomorrow's the, the next night, February 23rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Inglewood Office. So if anyone wants to take advantage of that, it's, this is only for incomes of $49,000 and less. So take advantage of that. And, and that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Mayor Protem Warris?
Vargas.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vargas. I just heard somebody out there give how long the speech took.
Thank you, Mayor Lambert, I mean, Mayor Guedi. Okay, now, let's, let's get to business here.
Did you say something?
What I did this time, I, there's going to be some directives that I'm going to be talking about, so I wrote out a outline list so that it could help staff, out of consideration for their time, make sure that they have notes to go along with this, they don't have to be jotting this down during the meetings. So let's get straight to the activities that I've encountered this last couple weeks. The state of the city luncheon was great. Thank you, Mayor Guedi, for the good news. And congratulations to Pat Donaldson for putting on a great show. Really good. I would like to thank our staff for the Ralph's cleanup. To Ray Sean, thank you very much for sending the code enforcement out there and sending all the necessary people to clean up and to give the necessary warnings to the Ralph's parking lot owners so that they can keep their area clean and keep the illegal vendors out. And code enforcement's playing a, a part in that, and our police is too. So thank you very much to the chief as well for being involved with that. I'd like to thank Arnie for the cleanup around the Hawthorne Mall site. So thank you very much, Arnie, for doing that. If we need to, let's send the bill to the owner because, you know, it's, a lot of it's his responsibility, if need be. If it's enough of a warrant, it needs to send him the bill. If not, then we'll just assume it ourselves. That's okay. And thank you to our code enforcement personnel for going around the Hawthorne Mall and helping out our homeless individuals who are there, leading them to the necessary, to shelters and food banks. So thank you very much to code enforcement for that. Yes, this last, I guess this month that we're in, we're Black History Month, so I also went to the same event that, that Mayor Guedi, I think, and the council, other fellow council members were at, at the Teen Center and at the Senior Center. So there was a lot of great song, poetry, dance, and definitely highlights the contributions of African Americans to not only our country, but to our own community here Hawthorne. So it's a good thing to celebrate. Valentine's Day, Valentine's Day, I was able to go out to the, to the Senior Center, I was DJing for them. So I was playing some of the 70s, the oldies. It was good to see the seniors going out and dancing, getting their boogie on. So it was great to, and I joined a couple of them, so they kind of outdid me to the James Brown stuff, so it was good to be out there with them. I had a visit to the women's club, so thank you very much for having me there. It was great to talk to a lot of people that I, who's, are the parents of some of my friends be there, and a lot of people that I've seen in the community, you know, being involved, and it's great to see that the women's club is still going strong. We had about 30 ladies there, and it was very impressive that they're very involved and really wanting to make a change. And it's a social experience also for them, so I would encourage you to continue that. Also, I know that the, that we had our, a community relations officer have a Coffee with a Cup, Coffee with, I said the same thing, Coffee with a Cop at the McDonald's over there on Hendry, but I would like to move them to the opposite side of town for the next one on, let's say, have them go to the McDonald's on El Segundo near Prairie so that they can reach out to the different sectors of our community. That way, we will make sure that are, they're available for different parts of our community, as I mentioned. All right, so these are going to be some directives that I want to talk, important things, things that are going to help our community, services and et cetera. So I would like for the city manager to enlist the help of director, of Animal Control Officer Helen Coronel to contact the Amanda Foundation to coordinate a spay and neuter session at City Hall. She has all the information. I talked to her, she's ready to go, she just needs your authorization so that you can delegate this to her. The service is free. They have their, their spay mobile that can come to City Hall and definitely, and it's targeting the larger dogs and the pit bulls. I know we have some misconceptions, et cetera, but it's targeting those dogs, but it's an opportunity to reach out to those owners and acquire the dog permit fees and issue the dog permits. So it's a good opportunity. Eventually, if we could put this on the agenda, once she has this going, so that we could talk about it here at the city council meeting. I have it all on this list. I would like to talk about the emergency response plan for the city of Hawthorne, and we've talked about this in the past, but do we have an overall comprehensive plan for the city of Hawthorne? We've talked about it, but what is it? So I'd like to place on the next council agenda a request for Mr. Claudio Taniguchi to give us what his plan is, or if he doesn't have a plan, just to give us a timeline as to when he will be able to have all the, the necessary planning, all the, what the logistics are, what the equipment that is needed to be purchased so that we can go ahead and purchase these things. There's no excuse for not being prepared. We've talked about it a lot, a lot, a lot, but do we have the plan? Where is it? We need to know, so if you can come to the next council meeting, that would be great. Okay, so we, civic pride. I mean, what's happened? Where, where's our Christmas parade? It's been about three or four years that we've had one. So it's time to talk about something. It's a money thing, exactly. So we need to see, though, if it's achievable, if we can do it, and if we can get enough sponsors. But before we do that, I would like to ask the city manager to direct staff to get together, the gals from the Business Licensing Group, from the Parks and Recreation Group, Mr. Hardison, and Mr. Rick Carver, if you can play a part in this too. And maybe Mr. Sergeant Chris Konyak, if you can come and meet with the, the group over here. I think two weeks is enough to kind of come up with, not necessarily a detailed plan, but just an overall plan to get an idea how much we're talking about. We did have a lot of extras at the last one, so if we can cut down and maybe just have a parade, you know, as long as we keep the tradition going, and if it gets, if it increases in popularity, we can improve the next time. But we got to start off small. But, I mean, there's no excuse for, you know, for the city not to maybe have something like this for the community. Yes, there are restrictions, but let's see if we can get sponsors, et cetera. So if you could put that on the next agenda for the next council meeting, please. The Bodge Park situation with visitor parking is of concern to a lot of residents. And I've received calls, and I've received, you know, emails with regards to this subject. And what happens is that the residents who live there are issued three parking permits, but they don't receive anything for the visitors. So what happens is that on holidays like Christmas or New Year's Eve or long holiday weekend, you have visitors coming from out of town, or just your friends who are visiting for the holiday weekend. They wake up, and every couple days, they're getting the ticket on their windshield. Is it fair? No. Why? Well, let's not make that judgment now, but we haven't made the necessary accommodations for visitor parking so that they can come and apply and get the necessary permits so that their visitors will be able to park when they're visiting. So we need to make that accommodation, and what I'm asking is for our city manager, I have this on the list, don't worry, for him, for Mr. City Manager, if you could please take a look at a plan to addressing the parking situation over there for visitor parking in the Bodge Park sections. There's about three resolutions that address this. So I think if you go and talk to the city clerk, you'll be able to pick those out and be, and address each one of them. There's the three, we talked about that, right? Thank you, Mr. City Clerk, too. Okay, I want to just bring, this next item is, I just want to bring attention to this item. It's a video game that's coming out, two video games, actually. It's called Call of Juarez: The Cartel. And it's a video game that they're, that they're putting out. The Call of Juarez: The Cartel. Basically, it's a video game that is glorifying drug dealing and all the narco violence that's taking place, and it's awful. Approximately 3,000 people die each year in one city in Mexico, Ciudad Juarez, which is a border town. And that's equivalent to about 200 people dying each year, say, in Hawthorne. So imagine 200 of your neighbors dying here in Hawthorne. And no matter how you feel about the immigration issue, the drug violence issue, this is, to be able to exploit the suffering of these people is, is awful. So there's also another application for your iTunes, it's called Smuggler Truck. It's a little game where you're playing around with like, say, little figures that are being transported on, on trucks. Again, no matter how you feel about the issue, whether you're pro or against it, you can't, I mean, it's, it's totally wrong to make fun of people's plight.
It's an Xbox game, right?
It's an Xbox game. Well, no, it's going to be an app. So I just want to bring this to the attention of the parents out there, that these types of games are out there, and it's not a fun thing, it's not funny. People are suffering in different ways. Our country's suffering, they're suffering, et cetera, so it's not funny. Let's take this serious, and please take a look at what your children are playing so that we, you know, don't, you know, we don't glorify violence. So one of the things I wanted to put on the next agenda, I've received a lot of calls on this with regards to how long the city council members take up here in giving their, their reports. We need to be efficient, and I don't know how the residents out here feel about that. I mean, does anybody have any objection of maybe keeping our presentations to 10 minutes?
Eight minutes.
I mean, I hear a lot of yes, yeses out there, so I would like, I mean, it's out of consideration. We limit you guys to five minutes. I think we should limit ourselves to something reasonable in the past, something that we had in effect. 10 minutes, out of consideration for you, but as part of that, what I'm going to ask, just so we can be efficient, is that we refrain from the city council members up here in town. from the city council members up here interrupting, let's say, somebody when they're giving their presentation. Say, if we don't need any department chair people to come up here and explain anything, let's try to cut that out. Let's try to just go through what our list says, so that we can move forward and just not lose everybody's attention, essentially. So, I'd like to ask for that to be placed on the next agenda for the 10 minutes. A 10-minute, I don't know if we can vote on that now, or do we have to bring that?
You're just asking.
Okay. If you could please place that on the agenda, and we can have the discussion about that the next time and see where we end up. Okay? So, let's just put that as a discussion item and see where we're at, okay? So, thank you very much, everybody, and have a good rest of your week.
Wow. I'm glad Mr. Wars brought up the overtime report. It's very important for us to consider what's going to happen with our future revenues. Everyone thinks we balance the budget, and we have a balanced budget right now, but every day's ticking. I don't want to be like Sacramento. They're losing millions of dollars a day, and no one can make a decision, because they're afraid of whose feelings are going to hurt. So, what we need to do is constantly look at what we're doing, our cost, our overtime, the hiring of people, the necessities. One of the reports I had asked during business, during the budget workshops, was to look at every revenue-producing department and find out if they're adequately manned. Like, we had that problem with the HUD situation, that it wasn't missing money, it was just documentation was off. If, like, revenue-producing departments, Jim, you need to talk to the people that are running those departments and ask them if they are understaffed, and it's affecting their ability to do the job or to collect revenues. It's very important. Those are positions that you can't say, well, I don't want to hurt this department's feeling because of this. That's got to end. Revenue-producing departments have to be staffed and manned and collect money. I saw Mr. Wars just showed me $167,000 that was missed. So, we want to work on that. The other issue that I'm getting complaints about in the Ramona track is the trash pickup. Five o'clock at night. Tonight, I made it a point to drive down the street, and sure enough, 133rd, trash cans knocked over and trashed in the street. The whole point that this council did was to make sure that trash was picked up, and then the street sweeper would go by. Do you have a street sweeper that picks up at 5:00 at night? I don't think so. And this has been the last three Tuesdays, and two of my neighbors are irate, because they keep dumping their trash can down. So, you need to get with Allied. Their agreement was to have the trash picked up in the morning, and then the street sweeper would go right behind them, and it's not happening. We give away all this CDBG money, and we do all these things. I wanted to wait and see how long this took. We have this poor homeless lady that we discussed last week, that she was sleeping in front of the laundromat. She was there another week and a half after that, just laying in the middle of the sidewalk and at night in the doorway. No one made an attempt to go help her. She must be in her 70s. She's got a huge shopping cart. I talked to the one of the people in front of Rite Aid, and she said she was told to move down the street by someone in the city. I'm not going to go any further than that, but they told her she had to get out from in front of the laundromat, move it down the street. Well, for the last week, she's been sleeping at the bus bench at 132nd. We give a lot of money away to these people, CDBG funds that are supposed to help, and you would think somebody would have jumped on this already. And that poor lady's probably sleeping right now as if you go by on that bus bench. So, we really need to review where our money is going. Also, the young officer in the back of the room, could you please stand? I can't remember your name.
Christina Michelson.
Christina Michelson. For my granddaughter to recognize her on the fourth time we went down the street, saying, didn't we just see her pop stop somebody? She was all over the city Saturday. I mean, thank you. She was writing some serious tickets and pulling over. Congratulations. Thank you. Really appreciate that. I mean, even over in Manita Gardens, I was just cutting across, and there she was no matter 10 minutes later. So, thank you very much, because that's what we need. Captain Kaufman, I know he was here earlier. I want to thank him for what he's doing on Imperial. I'm not going to give away the scheme, because maybe they're watching TV, but some of the things they've already done, I want to thank them. Chief, in the State of the City, I was able to read a lot of your new departments that you've implemented. I've already seen some good come from it, especially Imperial Highway. Keep up the good work. Patricia in the Chamber, I want to thank them for hosting the State of the City and always supporting the city to help better us in the community. Finance Department, I know that we keep losing these intrums, Jim. We keep losing these interim finance directors, which is starting a problem with reports and with reports to the state or the feds or revenue reports or payments. I don't know how much time this present finance director has, but I think it's time to buckle down and do a full-blown. If there's no objection from council members, we don't get involved, but we've already had now two interim. It's costing us a lot of money. They leave, and the next guy has to come in and start all over. I think it's time to hire a finance director to come in, take over, start watching the The last thing, Council Member Wars brought up about the fire truck. Someone's pulling something on the city of Hawthorne, and we should not tolerate it. A message should go loud and clear that that Quint, I spoke about it here back in maybe September or August, I talked about we were getting a new truck, and some kind of politics happened. All of a sudden, Gardena just got on as a contract city. They're getting our fire truck. This Quint was scheduled, and I have the documents right here, was scheduled to come to Hawthorne. We worked hard to get that brand-new fire truck because of SpaceX. The Quint we have right now only reaches 75 feet. SpaceX is over 100 feet. We have Northrup, we have the Ayers Hotel, we have all these new hotels coming in. Well, it gets better. We were given, when we took over the contract, we were given an old fire truck from somewhere out of Lancaster. That fire truck has 250,000 miles on it. Inglewood has gotten new equipment. They're trying to bounce around all over the place. I went and pulled all my old notes when we were working on this. That truck belongs to Hawthorne. We need to send a letter loud and clear. I know that Chief Freeman is leaving, but there's some relationship between the captain and the chief of the Gardena Station, that they're taking our fire truck away. That's not right. The question Mr. Wars brought up, the excuse they used was that this Quint couldn't be housed. They approved a work order after, this approvals went all the way across the county, commissions and boards, that they had this 52-inch covering that they've already purchased and approved. Pardon me? 52-foot covering that at night, the Quint would pull in. They already approved, and they have the funding to build the new station. The Quint that we have now has all old equipment. If, God forbid, we have a problem at the Hawthorne Airport, or say SpaceX needs a truck, or all the new hotels, we're going to be in trouble. So, I would like this council tonight to authorize the city manager to send a letter to the LA County Fire Department, new chief, that that Quint will be delivered to Station 162, or we'll sit down and discuss our contract with them, because this is wrong. That's our truck. And to give it to Gardena over Hawthorne, and the taxpayers have paid for that. We've been with the county fire department, I think, since, what, 1998? Has it been back then? Is it 1998?
Seven, I think. 1997.
Okay. Well, then, that fire truck belongs to us, and we fought for it. So, if there's no objection with this body, send it registered mail, put a call to all the chiefs that we want to see that truck parked over on Crenshaw.
I'll concur.
And the last thing is, CDBG funds, Jim. I remember that our former finance director says you usually use your CDBG funds to protect your general fund. We need to readdress what we've done with the CDBG funds and look at what we can do within the city, because we've cut a lot of services, because we took away CDBG funds that was helping in the low and moderate areas of the community. Because I don't want to end up with the headline, city of Hawthorne, you know, Wisconsin governor says we're broke. I mean, I don't want to be there, because, remember, there's, our employee costs continue to grow. Those CDBG funds are there also to help the city provide better services for the community. So, I want to readdress that and look at all this funding and go back the last five years. I want to report of the last five years, how we distributed the CDBG funds compared to how we distributed them last year, because we've made a lot of cuts in City Hall we didn't have to make. So, with that, I hope the directives are written right this time.